Heavenly Father, God willing, come to you, Lord. We ask that you watch over these proceedings tonight, Lord, that your will be done above all things. You guys be with everyone, take them home safe, and bring us another glorious day. Amen.
Can show me in the pledge?
The pledge is to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just kind of want to open the floor to any public comments? If we have any, yes, Mr. Andrew.
Do I come forward? I explain rules. I just want to clarify, after my last presentation here, we got slaughtered on Facebook, which we expected. But there seemed to be some questions even from people that were present at the meeting. We're not asking the city to block nonprofits. We're not asking the city to prevent people of limited means from getting veterinary care. We're not greedy, and we are concerned about animal welfare. Our point was that a nonprofit designed to make a profit not be promoted or accelerated by the city over the top of businesses that were already established in Bowie. This is a situation that I think Dr. Marlowe presented had occurred earlier. It occurred recently in Young County in two different cities. The Young County judge was clear in my discussion with him that our taxes are going, are being used to actually put us out of business, working with nonprofits. And that is something that we want to prevent in Bowie. So I wanted to make those clarifications so that as we move forward on this, everybody understands what the situation was. It's not to prevent nonprofits, it's not to prevent charity, it's simply to ask the city to refrain from promoting a nonprofit over the top of a business. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other public comments? Your name?
Mitt Palmer. Got about three quick topics. First one, I want to say that as far as Palmer's explanation of what he's asking for, the part that I find unfair, and I have business in other hands than here, is that the city is subsidizing and giving somebody a free building, utilities and all, and I'm a competitor. That's not fair shit. And I totally agree with Penn's plight and Home's plight. Second thing I touched on two weeks ago is that my dog got attacked in the yard, and I asked for fines to be multiplied by 10 times, Bowie. Yesterday, I had to go out, and here comes a lot of water out of my horse stall. I got a gun, went out there, and I thought, well, I better do this somewhat right. They weren't after my horse right then. Where did they go after him? They were out in my pasture, running free. And I called the police department, and I believe it was Officer Parker came out, and I kept an eye on them, they'd gone down the street. And he went down there and, lo and behold, he got him to jump up in his car, which I wouldn't have done, and he took him down to animal control. And did we get this dog problem? And it's not just affecting me, I'm not on Facebook, but I've looked at the Bowie Facebook pages, and this, yeah, pretty rampant with it. So if we need to have animal control on hand for Saturday and Sunday, or do we burden the police department with it? These dogs, one of them did not have a collar, the other one had a collar, no tag. And it's like the guy that his dogs killed mine, there was no investigation, and I gave him the tag. And I got a picture of him. But we got to do something. We can't just sit back and wait for it to go. Then the third thing is I was against the town having to take on this golf course. I heard y'all on council talking about where you need to study and go look at it, get a little more in depth, where else to do it? First thing I'd say, you drive around town, start looking at the streets, and what we need to spend our money actually on, and let's not go buy something that's just a few people going to enjoy it, whether they give your son a job, or they're good people, or what, it's not a good investment for Bowie. We're not operating on the surface, and I hope y'all consider that, do not vote for that. I don't know how many other people in this town, but I understand if we want to have a say in it, it's just y'all, we don't get to vote on it like the hospital. And it's just not right. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, sir. Yes, Ms. Palmer.
Pam Marlowe, and I wanted to let you all know that I also saw the stuff that was going on on Facebook. I probably didn't read all of it because of knowing all of the different places that it was posted. But I made a concerted effort to answer everybody's questions. Anybody who had a question, I would be glad to answer it. And I want to let everyone know that if you have questions of any kind whatsoever on this topic, or pretty much any other, feel free to call and ask. I'll be glad to try to help explain to you what the problem is, what the issue is, and the negative consequences that can result from that. In the past weeks, since the last city council meeting, I've worked very hard to dig up information and paperwork that I've had through the years when working with different animal control laws, working with different associations in other towns, and working here in Bowie. And I feel like that if I can provide you with accurate, complete information, that people will have a better chance of making a decision, that in the end, they won't regret. So I'm offering myself as a resource to y'all and to anybody in town who has questions or needs more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the information, ladies and gentlemen. Anybody else? If not, we'll close the floor for our public comments, and we'll go into announcements. I have a single announcement, the city office will be closed Monday, the 18th, for Tel Aviv. Next item on the agenda is the conservative agenda items. Assuming council has read the minutes from the previous meeting, has permission to approve?
Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Bell? Do I have a second motion, a second to approve the?
Oh, second.
Councilman Kent? Bishop?
Aye.
Bell?
Aye.
Love?
Aye.
Blackmaster?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Next in the item on the agenda is old business, the Northex mitigation plan update. Mr. Henry.
As I said last week, we permitted 10 items that would need to be mitigated. I have since gotten some feedback from Northex for this, and there's some questions that need to be answered, and some information that they need back from us, and assuming to do that, that part of the process will be fixed. Ready?
Any questions for Bert? Let's move on. The request from Dr. Anderson on addressing the acceleration of nonprofits over small businesses, if you would like to get their medicine and cover it down. As you know, Mr. Anderson just quite a lot of things we said last week. Tracy?
I'd like to answer a few. Okay, so when I went back and was trying to figure out exactly what the problem was being addressed, we need to start talking about enacting ordinances or even resolutions. And looking back at what had happened in Alney was, I think the city had entered into a contract with a nonprofit, and of course, there was some, there was some blowback in Rightland, so I'm not, I'm not commenting on that. But in terms of the city enacting basically the law in regard to not going into business with nonprofits, I'm going to tell you why I think that that's going to require. The mayor, this council wants to issue some sort of statement in support of local businesses. I hope so that we understand that, but as far as enacting an ordinance that says the city's never going to do any business with nonprofits, and it would have to be all nonprofits. We can't just say one particular area. I don't think that's advisable. That's my little opinion.
Any other questions, Bert?
So that's your advice, but there's no written law, isn't there?
We do not promote, do we promote? Do we promote, do we, I mean, we do not do that for nonprofits.
The city has in the past.
The city as in the city, I mean, like the Riverside, or the?
The city of Bowie. I presented a letter to the mayor, and I think that photocopies remain for all of you, that I wrote back when Mr. Kentwell was the city manager, and I had objected to the city bringing in a spay neuter group. And that group was given at the time, city facilities at no charge, utilities at no charge, garbage, that sort of thing, at no charge. Some of the city employees were volunteers there, and essentially, they came in and did a big spay neuter day, and then left.
How long has that been?
That was, well, 2008, wasn't it? Yes, ma'am.
It's been a while.
Recently, yeah. Recently, there's been no active promotion.
Speaker.
I think Dr. Anderson has a question. Yes, sir.
Okay, and I understand that, and I agree with our city attorney. I aim high, okay? I aim high. What I'm after is to prevent this in the future. Contracts were entered in the city of Alney, they were entered in the county, and they were in Young County, and they were also entered in the city of Graham. I was told by our nonprofit in Wichita that they are coming to Bowie. Does this make sense? They're coming to Nakona, and they're coming to Henrietta. And my thought is, surely I can get our rural community around us. We're not preventing them from entering the city, as Ms. Jennings said. What we want to do is have assurance from our city so that our city is not promoting this and encouraging it, providing advertisement, providing a contract, providing buildings, et cetera. It's called preventative medicine.
Wasn't they have it last time? Was it out the shelter?
I don't exactly remember. It was a city building, but I did not attend, so.
It was a city building, Lord, by the dome. Okay, that's in our past history. What I'm trying to do is prevent it from happening in the future. This is a true threat, and so I'm doing a little preventative care.
I understand, and I'm not being dismissive.
I don't, I don't believe you are. I actually agree with what you said.
Okay.
And I'm good with it.
If it comes up on the agenda for this council or any other council to approve an agreement to enter into a contract with a nonprofit to come here and provide services, and the city's going to get on board and sponsor that or provide something, I'm expecting you all to be back here talking to the council.
I will.
But I know, but in terms of, just in the off chance, nobody's taken any action yet here, and I understand what happened elsewhere, but now these folks are aware of it, that they're more, they're more on point.
And that's, and that is perfect, and that's exactly what the judge in Young County said, "I was unaware of this, I'm now aware of it." And so if my city council is aware of it, and it's been discussed in public like this, and we understand the urgency behind it, let's move on.
Yes, ma'am. In the same way when this happened back in 2008, by the time I was aware that it was going to happen, and I started to visit with people in the city to talk to them and explain to them why, in the long run, because they had intended for this to be a more than one time thing, and tried to explain, and the ball had already begun rolling, and, you know, there was no way to stop what was happening until afterwards, when I got a chance to send letters and sit down and really explain, had the time to explain, the eventual outcome, the eventual problem that the city was going to have. And so I agree, we have to be proactive, because if we don't, it's much easier to stop something before it happens than it is to ask the city council to rescind their contract.
Our other clinics, if, my personal other clinics in other towns have had exactly what Dr. Marlowe is discussing happen. It went through maybe a city employee, maybe a secretary, and the city councils rubber-stamped it, and we moved on.
Let me make a statement.
I want to prevent that.
And David backed me here. If they came to town with any kind of portable units to do something like that, they're going to have to see David. They're going to have to have the same permits that anybody else would have to have that's coming to town to offer some kind of permit, portable. So by having David involved, and the council aware, and the city manager, I think it'll be a growth process. It may be three years, it may be three months before we see, but by having all the city staff, and especially the people that will, they'll have to touch with the city, I think we can pretty much guarantee you guys that it's not something to go by the wayside without.
And I'm thankful for that, and I appreciate your help on it. So it's good. I just had to aim high.
Do we have a policy as far as what nonprofits we will help and which ones we won't? Or any type of a policy that states, you know, we will limit assistance to, you know?
Now, but y'all know, for instance, when folks come, what, Helen Park for free, or the Romeo for free, or the Community Center for free. That's typically something that's before the council in order to waive associated fees, in my experience. And so I'm speculating, and, you know, Pam, I don't remember the 2008 deal, have no recollection of it at all. So typically, though, that is something that the council would be in position of having to approve.
And again, we go back to, they would have to see David for fees and permits. So if they decided they wanted those waived, they would have to come to the council in order to get those waived. And I hope, this council, I don't think would waive them. I think that's about the farthest we can go, too. Sure. Now, when we're talking about fairness, all of the 501(c)(3)'s that come in and that sort of thing, I would tell you that the vast majority of them that come in are going to be here a day or two. You know, somebody mentioned before about restaurants or whatever, you know, don't mind the competition of the folks that come in on trade days, weekend, or whatever. Well, you know, that's two days out of a month versus somebody that would come in with their food wagon for a 501(c)(3) to raise funds that would be here in perpetuity. I mean, if somebody wanted to come in, and I think you do have limits on the license, on the permits, on how long a 501(c)(3) can remain in town. Especially all the low stuff. There's ways to guide away from all that. Any other questions? Council? So at this point, we're going to, we're going to leave it at, is our council and our staff is fully aware of this situation, Dr. Anderson brought to our attention, and you guys will be contacted personally by me as long as I'm in office, if anything comes to town.
I appreciate all y'all's work. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda, I called David to the podium, and I didn't see earlier when I said he wasn't here, because I was missing his hat.
We're going to consider the recommendations and planning is only on request from Tom Smith, re-plant one acre, part of blocks one and two, and all of blocks three and five, block 10, Lindsay addition, creating blocks 2R, 3R, 4R, 5R, and 6R, block 10, Lindsay addition. Anybody have any questions for David? You know, this is the item that was tabled at the last meeting for further investigation.
Are we going to change that? Will we change?
Can't change it.
Okay, so we talked about the fact that we wanted to, you talked about the fact that you wanted to limit older mobile homes coming in, and with my conversation with Tracy, said that that's not allowed by law, that law trumps us? So Tracy, would you like to take that from there?
Only if we allow that.
No, no, we don't have that for us.
In regard to this type of re-plant at the point where David told you guys last time that they had met their legal requirements, they have. And so in terms of the approval, the committee's in for recommending it, and I think the staff recommend that you all approve it. Any change potentially that might be made at a later date in regard to the ordinances for manufactured housing, mobile homes, trailer houses, whatever you want to call them, that is a separate consideration, and that is not before this council today. If that is something that staff is directed to look at, I will take a deep dive and compare federal and state statutes with our code ordinances, but that's not a consideration today.
So it's possible to change the ordinances at any point?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if our current ordinance is in compliance with state federal law, because I haven't been able to look at it. And that's typically how it works, since I'm not in the house, is it's only at the point where it becomes an issue brought to my attention.
So right now, what's on the table is to accept this re-plant. So I would entertain the motion to accept this plant as brought to us by David for the planning is only.
So, no.
Councilwoman Bell? Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Bell? Do I have any conversation, discussion?
Well, I think in the future, we do need to look into that. But I know this not on the plate right now, but I do think.
Yeah, we have a legal file.
Yes. And my concern is, I realize that it's not a mobile home park, it's not owned by one person, but in the end, it's going to look it. Every one of those spaces are designed for single-wide mobile home, and at the end of the day, it's going to look like a mobile home park. With 45-year-old mobile homes allowed to be moved in with no ownership.
Because you cannot build a house on this size of?
No.
Lots.
Sit back.
So that, as I was told last time, this is legal where it's at.
That's true.
So is there a difference between this and the mobile home parks that we have?
Yeah, a mobile home park is usually have one owner, and it could be multiple owners but one particular lot of land. With a park, have seven. This particular plant is different lots for different owners in the future, because he's going to sell these lots, supposedly.
So if you, so if you, if I bought this piece of land and I decide I'm going to rent to own these, and even though it turns people, I may turn 10 a year, that's still not a mobile home park?
No. No, because it's individual lots, different addresses, everything. I have a question. Are all the lots currently owned by the same individual? And could he take those off the market and put his own on there and rent them? And would that constitute a mobile home park? The lots are owned by the same person. Thank you. And he could. That's not constitute a mobile home park. But he could move in a trailer house on each one of those lots? Yes. And rent those out? Yes. And it would not constitute a mobile home park? No. You need another officer.
So why is that different than a mobile home park? What makes that not a mobile home park?
Well, let's say you put a single.
And I guess so.
We're way beyond where you're.
Oh, sorry, for a replant.
Do I have a motion? Now I have a second to approve the plan. Kent?
Yeah.
Bishop?
No.
We're going.
Bell?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Blackmaster? I'm sorry. And Malone?
No.
Okay, Bishop and Malone, both there.
Kind of a form of order right here. If we'd have done nothing tonight, this plan would have been approved all automatically.
Well, I understand, I mean, I understand now. I mean, I understand where we're at, but I just think in the future, we didn't have to worry about it.
So that's a topic on the agenda as a publicizing of city meetings. And Bert, you did a webinar this week?
Yeah, I did the webinar, Mid Black Wednesday, with a company called ICOPA, and basically, they showed with very minor equipment that you can broadcast, with their software, you can broadcast over our website. I have contacted them twice. Eventually, there was 10,000 people on that webinar, because I've contacted them twice to see what kind of equipment we need to do it. You can have as many cameras as you want to. The cameras are voice activated. In other words, if somebody on that side of the room is speaking, that camera comes on, you know, it all depends. You could cover this room with one camera, but it would probably be way back there, so you might want to consider more than one camera, maybe one on that side, or one on that side, or whatever. And there are, of course, audio and video stuff. But anyway, like I said, I've contacted them twice, and I haven't heard a word yet. I think they're real busy. I think there's a lot of cities into them, and it's a pretty good process. Diana sent through the webinar with me.
They had a lot of new tools.
Are user-friendly? Was it user-friendly?
It seemed to be very user-friendly.
Plug and play.
Plug and play, and it had a lot of things to make it, like if you were interested in a certain point on the agenda, it actually linked your agenda to a section of the video. So instead of having to watch the entire council meeting, you could click on an agenda item, and it would hop straight to that section of the video. It had a place where you could actually, for the city secretary to take the meeting minutes right there in it and register the votes, so you could actually see who voted where, right? All of the record keeping could happen right there inside the module. It was rather impressive.
So what's the cost on that?
Don't know yet. They didn't cover that part.
That's part of why I was trying to get a response. That's part of why I'm trying to get a response.
And it is compatible with our software we have now?
It's completely web based, there is no software, it just needs a, the camera.
Pretty neat stuff. I, I'm sure that the service contract on the software is not gonna be cheap, but it's pretty neat stuff. I mean, as far as typing our minutes, we may not have to do that anymore. What's that?
So it was ICOMPA? I-C-O-M-P-A?
ICOMPA.
ICOMPA.
Anyway, it was really pretty stuff.
So.
But soon as I get some more information. Actually, the name of it is ICOMPA's tech, T-E-T-H.
So I have a question, just to ask them a question. Okay, so everybody okay with them continuing research on this particular company? Come on, Kim, Ryan. So we're gonna leave this to you, keep investigating, get some answers. Do you have any action? All right, let's go down to new business, discussion and action. The first thing on that new business is a council orientation and discussion of duty, which will be hosted by Tracy.
Mayor and counsel, those of you who have been on this council board for, for a long time, you may also just join in and speak along with me because I know that you all have already heard. But a lot of it does bear repeating, not just for the new folks, but as a refresher. One of the most important concepts that we're gonna talk about, a common misunderstanding for a lot of new council members. They think they're gonna come in and change the world. And I hate to be the first ones, I won't be the last ones to tell you that that's not exactly how it works. Anytime you all are governing by consensus, that, that's what it takes. It takes a majority vote to get things done. And it's important to realize that this is a team game. You don't always have to agree, you don't always have to agree on the same concepts of the idea. But in order to share information and be heard and bring something to the table that some of the council members maybe haven't heard before, that's, that's a good goal to have. Now, if you wanna change somebody's mind, maybe. If you're not gonna change somebody's mind, maybe not. But it is something that you need to consider when you're performing to this groups. There might be something that somebody has to allow that you hadn't thought of before. Article one point nineteen hundred talks about how folks are supposed to pay this kind of all code ethics. And you all, do y'all get a hard copy of the book anymore? Is it all online? Same as everybody?
Play that out.
Everybody has a book. So if you are more web based, you can also fit online and look at those things. I don't wanna read those out loud to you all. You all can look at those if you have any questions about those. I want you to feel free to call, feel free, feel free to call city staff and just say, you know, hey, tell me I'm understanding this right. It's kind of a situation where nobody's your mom here. Nobody's here to tell you what's right and wrong in terms of staff. But state law and code ordinances are kinda supposed to be our guiding light. Now, that doesn't mean you're not subject to interpretation because everything is. When we start talking about communication, the important thing to realize is these folks are here and when we start talking about putting stuff on the internet, this is where folks think the decisions are made. Folks don't think the decisions are made when folks are sitting down parroting or emailing or texting or Instagramming or Snapchatting or whatever it is that folks do to communicate these days. Now, I think it's also a little not, you, I'll just go ahead and say dumb, to think that folks in this day and age only communicate and talking with each other in person. And I know that that is not accurate and I know that that's not true. But I do want you to keep in mind that all of those communications, when they have to do with public business, are pertinent to institutions. And those are the folks that have elected you, they're folks that even if they didn't elect you, you are still there represented and they have an expectation that when there's a discussion, that information is, is being provided in a forum where there can be life shown on what that discussion is. So when we talk about all of these things in light of ethical conduct, like in terms of the code ordinances and these communications, is doing the right thing because it is the right thing to do? This is my little shorthand version of Tracy's rules of housekeeping. If your worst political enemy found out what you did and raised the issue in public, maybe would you be embarrassed? Would you have a hard time explaining your conduct and justifying your actions? If your mother found out, would you find it embarrassing or hard to explain? When you're caught and you're going to find it difficult to explain to your family, especially your children? Why, why this happened and how it happened and what the justification was? This is also the time that I have to say to you that at some point, everything comes out. It may not be today, it may not be tomorrow, it may not even be next month. But y'all know, we live in Booby, Texas. And I'm just telling y'all, information, true or not, spreads like water. And so when you think that you're being smart, you're being clever, and nobody's gonna know, that just doesn't hardly ever work out. One of the things I wanna touch on that has not typically been luckily for me, a problem in any of my small towns, is receiving gifts if you're in official position. What you have to think about is somebody offers you something. Are they offering it to you because of your position on this campaign? Or would it be that you're gonna be getting that anyway? For instance, this candy, y'all could not be getting that candy going, sitting up there.
We need to share.
Yeah, so, but what I'm saying to you is, anything that it looks like it's trying to get you and make a decision that you wouldn't, that you wouldn't normally make, that you are a receipt of something because of your position, you probably need to turn that down. In regard to the Texas Open Meetings Act, now I know that y'all have certain requirements. Are they still having to watch the video with the music? Oh my gosh, okay. So the good news is this is a little bit better than that. It is a lot of information that you all are provided all at one time. But that's also still, you know, why you have staff to kind of work through those things with you. Under the code ordinances, you gotta have four folks to be discussing public business, that's a form. And there's a notice that has been appropriately posted. There are very narrow exceptions about when meetings are closed. And I'm also living in last year because I say in here, the good news is that as far as posting your agenda, the staff takes the reading and do our best to make sure those matters are posted appropriately. But you all will recall that we've had two instances since recently where I didn't do a very good job with the posting. But here's what I wanna say to you about that. I don't have a problem taking responsibility for who I am. I would have been more wrong to let you all meet in a closed session than, than decide quickly. And I'm gonna tell y'all, I'm gonna err on that side every time. And that's just something to be prepared, to be happy with and about. I apologize, there's no subterfuge, but I'm gonna tell you, that is my job. Now, had y'all decided that it didn't matter what I said, you were gonna go into closed session, that's one hundred percent on y'all. But at the point where I feel like there's an issue, I'm gonna raise it. Especially in something like that, I'm not just gonna be like, oh, you can't do that. That's the kind of thing that ends up with folks in the courthouse and we don't know anything about. So when we talk about what happens with unposted issues, like you are in the House for Kansas, particularly important tonight. When we have something like that, which raised, we do not go any further, I'm just calling y'all out. What we did is, we're taking it up later, if it is that kind of thing. If it is a statement of fact from staff in the board, for instance, David saying, you know, this is what's going on in this situation, but there's not deliberation because it is not posted. And so what we have to be careful about is looking like we are debating the issue without there being an opportunity for votes, who are entitled to notice, which is everybody to be present for the debate. So that's why when I say we're kinda getting a little far afield and I know it's hard, especially when we're walking through things, but you know, that's my job to say we probably need to reel it back in. Most items considered are open with very, very few exceptions. And I stress to you all enough how important it is that we not violate the Texas Open Meetings Act. I've talked a little bit to you all about when it's not in face to face exchange, even though that can still happen in a small town, like when folks stand around at the ballpark. You're standing around visiting our kids or grandkids and somebody walks up and says, hey, why didn't y'all do so and so when we started discussion? That potentially opens that up. Same thing, texting, emails, Facebook, whatever it is. Once that exchange begins, that can be, in my opinion, considered deliberation whether you mean for it to or not. And especially in today's world where, you know, once you get it out there, you're not really gonna back in. You can try to delete it or whatever, but it's somewhere out there in the ether. And somebody can track it down if they, if they want to. Anything can be interpreted as communication. And so my short answer, because this is gonna make it easy on me and make it easy on safety as the public information officer, is just don't do it. But again, as I said, I recognize, this is two thousand and nineteen. You know, gone, gone are the days of the string and the tin cans. But again, you have to think beyond what, what you're doing right here and you have to think long term. My best advice, and this is backed up by the folks at TML, Case Law, but AG opinion is don't talk about items of public business with each other outside of a properly posted meeting. Again, there's more to this in terms of criminal prosecution. Even if it's an innocent discussion, if it is misoverh, if it is misconstrued, you may beat the rap, but you can't beat the ride kind of thing. You may beat it ultimately when it is determined there's not a violation, but you still have to go through all of the steps to declare the name. These are ways to avoid problems. Not for any reason or in any context, discuss matters which the body of supervision and control outside of properly posted open meetings. Telephone, text, email, Facebook, whatever that we normally use to facilitate the exchange, exchange of information, should not be used to discuss the subject of policy issues or discussing public business for best benefit. So again, I know that it is unreasonable. I know that it sounds like it is too much, but it's not too much until it's not too much. And so it's kind of a slippery slope. If we get in the habit of changing information in that way with each other, then at some point, there's gonna be a conversation that we give and have. And then that is all subject to being disclosed under the public information at the first request for information. The other thing that's important about these communications is a council member commits a crime. If there is a conspiracy to circumvent the Open Meetings Act by meeting numbers less than the form for purposes of secret deliberations and violation of the Act. You all think on the desk, it's a bottom form, they call it that. Everyone seems like they're involved. A talks to B, B talks to C, C talks to D. You know, it's kind of like the telephone game, kind of a daisy chain. You're not supposed to be doing that, you're probably sharing. You're lost in penalties, violating the Texas Open Meetings Act. That's a fine punishment, you can go to jail for both. Also, it's one of those one of those situations where you just don't know if there even be a misunderstanding. Any actions taken by council in milli and middle of the year. Court can also assess cost of litigation, payment of attorney fees. We heard about a party that prevails any action under the Open Meetings law. So that means it starts costing the citizens money if somebody sues the city for violation of that. Sandy and I will very hard to make sure that anything that's on the agenda in regard to a closed session, if it is a closed session, we will work hard to make sure that those are posted appropriately. In this regard, the information that you all receive in these closed meetings is confidential. That's the whole point. I cannot say to you, you know, sometimes there is proprietary or otherwise confidential information from other folks other than the city, folks that were trying to enter into an agreement with. For instance, this ICOMPA, if they, if they come forward with a contract to protect proprietary information that they have and the city is out there, you know, talking about those things through its representatives, then technically, we can sue for interfering with their business. And we just don't wanna be in that situation. Think much the city's position by sharing information that may or may not benefit someone that the city is trying to negotiate with. So if they know what our position is, you know, we won't pay more than ten dollars for that piece of property, it puts us in a disparate bargaining position with other folks who may like to bid ten dollars and one cent for property because they, they know where the city is coming from in regard to those negotiations. Also, if we've been in a closed meeting and there's been information provided by council, you can, you know, in a manner of talking about it, you can reach the attorney by privilege. And that's one of the reasons for meeting, yeah, your council in private is so that not everybody knows what your position is legally on, on any given situation. And you all, it's been on there for so long now, y'all probably don't pay attention to it, but there's actually language on the agenda that says, we're talking about something. And I feel like we're, we're moving into an area where there needs to be a conversation with council. We, we can go into for a limited purpose consultation with attorney in regard to a particular issue. Now, that's not how we handle everything. That is not the normal course of business and it will not be. But there are times when you just have to take a step back and we need to talk about the legalities of things. And again, how do that executive session, say, well, Tracy said this or whatever, you're undermining, you're undermining the city. And I know that that's not what, what anybody wants. In regard to the Texas Public Information Act, the city secretary is necessary to be the person who's obligated to respond to requests for information. We want that to be one person. We want her as the person who is in control of reference for the city. We want her as the person who is in control of the record for the city, have access to that information, to be able to gather it and respond or make a request for ruling. If you have sent emails, text messages, voicemails, Facebook, or you've found whatever it is, and those are out there and they have to do city business, then potentially, she'll need to try to gather those up. We have to sort them, decide what may be sent on to the quester and/or make a request to the office of the Attorney General as to whether or not that information is to be disseminated. Now, the problem comes, there's a bunch of y'all, there's one of her, and there's one of me, and there's a very tight timeframe in making these responses. And as you all know, with the thread, sometimes it's the same information over and over and over. All of that information is together, if it's in regard to city business. Even if you don't think it's in regard to city business, but it is potentially in regard to city business, the national attorney general might put it in front of you. And by having a ton of information out there, we're just making the process just almost too hard. Sandy is one person, that's not her only job. I think some days it may feel like it is her only job, but you all know she has other things that she needs to be doing. So y'all can really help us by not communicating in that way because it is the city's obligation to respond. I know you tend to stifle your constitutional rights of speech. I'm not going to tell you that every bit of information out there is going to be disseminated, but do have to say that the city may be obligated to see production of that information from me. So please keep that in mind. That will help her, that will help me. Let's talk just briefly about liability. Council members make decisions that affects lives and property with citizens. You have to use your best judgment, you have to use your best judgment based on the information that you receive.